Good evening, welcome to the June 25th meeting of the Paulding County School Board. I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. We have four board members in attendance, one on the phone, in addition to that, so that's five, a couple on their way. In addition, we're joined by our Board Attorney and Parliamentarian, Mr. Cable, and our Superintendent Steve Barnett. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt our proposed agenda.
I will make that motion.
Ms. Lyons is making the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, unanimous for who's here.
And Jeff is on the phone with us also.
Jeff is on the phone. Good deal. All right. There we go. At this point, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, where we will discuss personnel, land, and legal matters. No votes will be taken except for to approve our executive session minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, no opposed. All right, we are adjourned to executive session.[606.00][606.00][applause]
Good evening. We will reconvene for our regular session. We were in executive session where no votes were taken except for the approval of the minutes. At this time, I would like to ask Robbie Finley, formerly with FCA, currently with the ministry Caleb's call, if he would come and give our invocation. And then after that, Mr. John Dean will lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Robbie.
Father, just thank you for how good you are. Most likely, everybody in here woke up in a bed with a roof over it this morning and was able to get out of the bed, obviously, because we're here. So just thank you for that. Thank you, Father, for these leaders in our community that are trying to invest their time and talents into seeing that our future is better because of what they're investing in and the value they're adding to it. Thank you for the teachers and administrators that are here. Father, we pray that you'll meet them every one where they are and be real to them in all the things that they're doing. Because, Father, they have to do their regular jobs and their family lives and everything where they're, I'm sure, because of the good they're trying to do here, they come under attack. So, God, we just pray that you'll be real to them in those situations. God, we pray that you'll give them wisdom and clarity and knowledge on how to move our county schools forward and be better and cause it to draw more people to want to be involved in our education system because of what they've done. And, God, we pray that you'll help our kids make good decisions and resist temptations that will come their way. And, Father, when they do make bad decisions, we pray they're not ones that affect the rest of their lives. Once again, we just thank you and pray, God, for your favor in all that we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes from our public hearing that we had on June the 11th.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Clayton. Mr. Fuller, would you like to second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Fuller. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Fuller?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I hear you now. Thank you. And I do need to state, Mr. Chester did abstain from that as not in that meeting, correct? You didn't vote?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Now I need the approval of our regular session minutes from our June 11th meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Clayton? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons. Second by Ms. Lyons. All in favor? Excuse me, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are all there? All right. At this time, I would like to turn our meeting over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Short report this evening, but showing their passion does not end for our students and our staff when they retire. We are fortunate to have Priya here with us. That's the Pauling Educators Association, Retired Educators Association. They're here tonight to offer, I think, some scholarships. And so I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I will ask Ms. Lester to come up to the podium and kind of take us through the next few minutes.
I'm getting scared.
I don't believe that. No, I don't either.
Before I was thinking about it, just think how our little kiddies felt when they was in our fourth grade. And it's like, what's she gonna do next? Thank you all so much. I hate to have everybody behind me. Can they hear me? I appreciate all that y'all do for us, and we hope that what we are able to do will settle with you too. Tonight, I had a little different schedule today. Before I say anything more, I'd like to introduce you to some more of our PREA ladies. The first one being Ms. Barbara Corin. Barbara was the one that started our scholarship program in 2008. That was really before I was born, but after I came, then we got together. Not really. Barbara has done a great job with it. Our current president, Ms. Laura Rice, she has done a great job with us, and we've been thankful to have her. Our next one is the one that's shortest in the family, Sandy Parsons. She knows I tease her because I'm short and she's not. But Sandy has done a fantastic job for, how many years she does it? She does it forever as a treasurer. And if I mess my book up trying to get something done, she's the one I go to. And last but not least, Patty and Beth are our upcoming co-presidents for PREA. And I'd like to, I just wanted to recognize them because they do so much in our school system. On a back end point, I don't usually do that, but it has been a real pleasure for PREA to help a lot of students as well as teachers in the county. Just a couple of things that we've done. We've taken some schools and started in the elementary and then gone to middle school and then to high school. And we've, again, help me out, Laura, we've given, like, what's, let's see.
School supplies.
Yeah, school supplies and gift cards and then hygiene items. And, of course, those boys in the high school, we didn't have enough combs. But it's, I don't know how to explain it. It's just something that we like to do, and we know that it helps them. And the teachers and the staff have really appreciated it, and we've been blessed to be able to do that and hope that we can continue. Okay, on with the program. Can I have Mr. Joshua Burden to come up? This is your fine board here. Check him out. That boy right there is really good, but you need to watch him. He was in my fourth grade. Josh is getting his master's degree in math for K-6, correct me if I'm wrong. He has a son that goes to Roberts Elementary. I liked what he said here. His belief of education is that all children are capable of learning. And we, as teachers, know that that may not be true all the time, but it can be. His goal is to make this world a better place, and teaching is more than a passion, I mean, is more a passion than his career. Congratulations to Josh. Have you got the certificate? Oh, I don't got them. Hold on.
While you're looking for that, I want to say to you, I always say that teaching is not a career, but it's a calling.
I promise you, you've got a certificate. They're up here. Who found them? You gotta watch, Tom. Shaw me up. We had pictures a while ago, but if you, you know, want to get a picture individually, you can. Ms. Barbara Corin, that's a beautiful certificate. And Josh, it says, Paulding Retired Educators Association, 2024 Scholarship is awarded to Joshua Burden. Congratulations to you, and keep up the good work. I'm telling you, what you written there, you do. Next one is a young lady, and Marcella. It sounds like Marshmallow, I told her, but I promised I wouldn't say that. She sort of pops them in, she knows. I told her I was from the south, and I can't say some of these long words. Okay, we got another one here that is really doing well. Marshana. I was close. My goodness. Okay. Marshana is getting her education, her degree. Actually, she has a bachelor's degree in theology. And she is, huh? Okay, okay. And she is also a, what is it, student, I mean, for children. And she goes to Chattahoochee Tech, and when she finishes that, and she's currently in Chattahoochee Tech, she will get her degree, her bachelor's degree from Highland, Highlands in Dallas. She is, I don't know, when I came to her school and I showed up, we hit it off, didn't we? I'm really proud of her, though, seriously. She is, works at Hiram Elementary School in the nutrition department. And as I said, she has a lot going for her, and she wants to be a teacher. When somebody goes to get a degree and they say they want to be a teacher, and then they go, and they're not good teachers. She's going to be a good teacher, and congratulations to you. Unfortunately, our third one is not here, and I will be presenting a scholarship certificate to her. Her name was Chantea Paulding. It sounds like Paulding County, but it leaves an "I," so it's just Paulding. She actually is something you're going to probably be surprised at, but she is, has been a cosmetologist for 12 years at Hiram High School. And she transitioned from that, being, doing adult stuff, to being a K-12 teacher. So she wants to continue her education, which I'm thankful for. She is wanting to get a specialist degree in curriculum and instruction. And guess, just think about, she also fix she hair. Unless Adam goes to see her. Beard, maybe, maybe, maybe. She will be going to, or she currently going to Piedmont University to get her degree. So you can give her a big thanks, and I'll let you know. I'll let you know that everybody was proud of her too. Anybody have any questions? If you want to be a teacher, go do it.
Do you want to ask Jason, what was the name of the teacher? Yeah, Jason, she was the custodian at Roberts, and they gave her a scholarship, and she became a teacher. Sonia? Yes. Now you remember who I'm talking about?
Yes, I do. Can I tell that?
If you want to.
That was the first one that, when we started doing the scholarships, we just wanted to help students, you know. And we never let anybody, just a few, we got started, we never let anybody do, get a scholarship unless they were actually a teacher in person or going to be a teacher. And this, she impressed me so much, and one day she said, listen, she said, I want to be a teacher. And remember, she was, you know. And drew, she drew stuff.
She's an artist.
So we, Ms. Barbara and me, and she was the first woman that was not a teacher, and she has become a teacher and doing the work. So we give her a big applause. Thank y'all very, very much for having us. We appreciate all the input for us.
Thank y'all for being here.
Y'all keep an eye on Adam.
Well, I will just mention one other thing with the superintendent's report, and that's open houses coming up on July 30th. All the information is out on our website. We'll take each, each level and break it up into two, two different sessions, and folks can go online to learn more about those open houses. We want to go and start getting that message out. It'll be here before you know it, and we'll be right back in the thick of things. So July 30th is that date. I had some slides here for, I want to give you all a quick update on Crossroads, but we're having a little technical difficulties. We'll save that for next time. But things are progressing very well at Crossroads. There are certain sections of that building you walk through, it's, it's ready. I mean, it's got chairs, everything looks like it could open tomorrow. But then there are other areas that need a little more work, but they're making great progress. And so, so no, no worries right now at this point about opening on time. So, so I'll share more of those next time. So that's all I have for the superintendent report.
All right. Where am I? Hang on one second.
No, it's okay. We're transitioning to the consent agenda, if that's okay.
I think we are.
So I will recommend approval of consent agenda items A through C, which includes a renewal of IFB 22-220311 Waste Removal Services with Waste Industries of Atlanta, renewal of RFP 21-200916 WAN and Internet services with Comcast Business, and the renewal of IFB 22-220614 Fencing and Gate Replacement and Installation with L&amp;L Fence and Fabrication. All is presented during the June 11th board meeting.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C as presented in our June 11th board meeting? Ms. Lyons makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Clayton, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the approval of items A through C? Mr. Fuller, are you there?
Aye.
Gotcha. All right.
Madam Chair, the next section is action agenda. We have two items. First is approval of our personnel report, which was presented this evening. And so I ask for approval of the report as presented excluding line item number 32.
All right. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve personnel items 1 through 70 with the exception of item number 32?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Clayton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fuller. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I'll request approval of line item number 32, the personnel report presented this evening.
Hearing the superintendent's, do we have a motion to approve personnel item number 32? So moved by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
And then the final item this evening, Madam Chair, is requests for the board to approve the sale of approximately 7.5 acres of raw land on Mulberry Rock Road in Dallas, Georgia to Integrity Development Group - ATL LLC, subject to final legal review and agreed upon stipulations.
Hearing the superintendent's request, do I have a motion to approve the sale of approximately 7.5 acres of land on Mulberry Rock Road?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. The motion was made by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. That is all you have. All right. So we are at a point, is there any public participation? No. All right. We are at a point for board member comments. Mr. Fuller, you get to go first if you are able to hear us.
I can hear you. I do not have anything, and I hope everybody is enjoying their summer.
Awesome. Thank you so much. You as well. That would bring to me, then. I would be the next individual. I just want to thank you ladies, the retired teachers. My mother-in-law, and father-in-law for that matter, are retired teachers. They started in West Virginia, moved down to Georgia, taught in Georgia for many years. My mother-in-law taught for over 40 years and then was a substitute teacher for a great number of years. Wonderful lady. We could not go anywhere without students coming up to talk to us everywhere we went. It is a calling, and it is certainly a calling that I'm a little nervous to see that there's not as many people interested in that profession. I myself wanted to be a teacher, and I let a college counselor talk me out of it. So that's why I am sitting here today, because I have a passion for this. So I thank you ladies very, very much for what you're doing and for the scholarships that you give to the individuals as well. And congratulations to all three of the recipients. Wish you guys the best, and thank you so much for what you do. Just want to tell everyone else to have a wonderful summer, and turn it over to Ms. Lyons.
Okay, I'm going to say, you know. No, seriously, you ladies, we really appreciate all that you do. It really means a lot. And all that you have done your whole lifetime. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Besides that, I just want to say I hope that all of our staff is doing some fun this summer, enjoying time with your family.
Mr. Chester?
Everyone have a safe summer. Be safe. Enjoy your summer. Be safe. Looking forward to seeing you again.
Mr. Dean?
Thank you. Hated that the ladies left because they have made an influence on, the teachers in general have made an influence on each and every one of us. It's amazing how you remember back. I was actually finished my education curriculum in college, and I was scheduled to go do practice teaching on Monday and backed out because I was afraid to teach. But anyway, everybody have a safe summer. Watch the heat. It's rough, so, but it's fun. it's fun.
Ditto. I mean, it's hard to believe we only have a month left of summer, pretty much. I mean, it's, August 1st is going to be here before we know it. So everyone just enjoy the rest of your summer, like Nick said. Stay safe, stay hydrated, enjoy yourselves, and have a great night.
All right. Comes to that time, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting. Mr. Dean makes the motion. Do I have a second for an adjourn?
Second.
Second.
I'll let Mr. Fuller make that second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.